Good evening, all. Welcome to the Kenny Bunkport Planning Board meeting of March 5th, 2025. We're here at the firehouse, and you can also join us by Zoom. Instructions are on the website. I'd like to start with attendance. We have four of five. George is not with us at this point in the evening. We're still waiting on him. He may show up, but four is sufficient. A quorum is three, so we're going to proceed. I'd like to begin with the approval of minutes. All, have you had a chance to look at the minutes that were put out?
Yeah.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yeah, good. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
I approve.
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 So unanimous approval. Thank you, Tricia. I'd like to begin with item one. Actually, we're going to begin with item two. Item one is the Rabbit Run subdivision, and that's continued at the request of the applicant. There's George.
There's George.
So we have, we have five now, all voting members tonight. Item two is number 250202, and it's a lot 11 Goose Fair. Public hearing is scheduled for this evening?
No.
Yes?
Not on that one.
Yes? No, 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 no.
Not this one.
I have it wrong. I apologize. I was very careful about putting this in my notebook, so I couldn't possibly get it wrong, but I have achieved that anyway. Thanks for the help. All right. So this is an initial review of Goose Fair. Thank you, Mr. Warner, Warner Gilliam.
Good evening, board. For the record, my name is Warner Gilliam. I'm with Walsh Engineering Associates. Here tonight representing the Sullivan family. A number of members are here with me this evening. So before you, we have a request for a minor modification to the boundary lines of Lot 11. And this is shown on the Gelardi plan of 1971. So this is a subdivision plan that was, that was created in 1971. This was, you know, you know, from the perspective of town history, this was right around the time when planning boards were first really being established. You know, zoning was also, you know, being established, you know, in and around this timeframe. So our proposal that we have before you is relatively straightforward here. We're merging 8,712 square feet from the abutting Sullivan parcel to the remaining land of Lot 11 to achieve a 42,431 square foot parcel. And really what this is, is we're proactively stepping in here to address any potential assertions that Lot 11 was rendered nonconforming due to the actions by previous owners in the chain of title. So now I'll speak a little bit more to, you know, I'll give you a little bit of the history behind this piece. So Lot 11, 1971, whenever it was created on the Gelardi plan, it contained approximately 41,000 square feet of land. Then in May of 79, excuse me, June of 79, the Gelardis, Anthony Gelardi, went to the planning board, and he described the lot line amendment. So the board noted, you know, in the minutes that a deed exchange could occur. And then after that, a new, a new plan would be brought to the board to sign and to be recorded. September 20th, 79, Anthony Gelardi sold a strip of land containing 7,281 square feet to Joan Moats, which was merged with Lot 10. So, and that's where the records stop in terms of what I can find. So no further records exist, you know, that I could find within the Kenny Bunkport Planning Board minutes or recorded documents or recorded plans at the registry deeds that, that noted the revision of that subdivision plan. So the process that you all have would have, you know, would have been in existence in 79. And it was alluded to in 79, that the plan come back to the planning board, that the revised plan show up in front of the planning board, that a plan be signed, and that it then be recorded at the registry. And that would have recorded the transfer of land from, from Lot 11 to Lot 10. So then, fast forward to September 2010. The Schaub family purchases the Gelardi parcels, which consist of Lot 11 and the Gelardi subdivision, Lot 15. And then outside of the subdivision, the Schaub's purchased Lot 23633 and 23636A. And those are shown, you know, those are shown on the plan. So then on October of 2016, Lot 15 that was purchased by the Schaub's is conveyed out, is conveyed to the current owner. And this is the lot that had, that has an existing house on it. And that, you know, that deed transfer refers to Lot 15. And that refers back to the plan that was recorded at the registry in 1971. So then subsequently, in February of 2024, the Sullivans purchased the remaining Gelardi property from, from the Schaub family, which was Lot 11, 23633, and then 23636A. So essentially what we have, what occurred is that you had this strip of land that was conveyed to the adjacent Lot 10, but that was never then formally recognized with a revised plan that was brought before the planning board. So ultimately, what we had then is we had, you know, a lot that contained around 33,000 square feet of land, which even at that time was below the minimum, you know, the minimum lot size of 40,000. So really what we're doing here, because the Sullivans own the adjacent property next door, we're able to now transfer land to the abutting, to Lot 11, to really deal with the, you know, if there were, to be any question about the conformity of this lot.
Due to the lot size.
Correct. Yes. Yep. So we're looking to bring, you know, to bring the lot size back up to essentially the same lot size that existed in 1971.
It was 41,000.
Correct. Yep.
And, and you're saying Lot 10 received land from 11 before, but Lot 10 isn't owned by
Correct. That's correct. Yes.
You can't just undo the past.
Right, exactly. And I, yeah, and that, I mean, that was 40 years ago, right? You know, so 40 years ago, that strip of land, you know, the Gelardis transferred a strip of land, you know, to the Moats' property at that point.
Probably was, you know, like over here, you know?
And so again, really just to, you know, to proactively make sure, you know, you know, I discovered this doing the due diligence work for the Sullivans. And at that point, you know, it was my recommendation to them that, you know, that we come to the board, that we rectify and deal with the situation so that there's not ever any question, you know, regarding this, you know, the status, you know, of this, you know, of this lot that was in the subdivision. And so we accomplish that, you know, by merging the land from their adjacent property, you know, to make this lot essentially whole numerically back to what was there in 1971.
Werner, based on everything else regarding the structure, right now, it would be a nonconforming property because the property size is too small. But with this swap, it would then allow them to do something with the house if they wanted to add on a porch or anything.
Well, there's no house there now. It's a vacant lot. You know, so Lot 11 is a vacant lot.
Lot 11 is the vacant lot, which is one with a house on it?
15, which is across the street.
Got it. Okay. Which is not involved at all here, just historically significant.
Historically, the Gelardis had owned it, but it was, whenever the Schaub's bought it, they conveyed that out separately. Which, you know, which they could do because that was an individual, you know, it was a separate lot, you know, on a recorded plan, you know, they, you know, duly recorded at the registry, and so they were able to convey that out. So in terms of other information, you know, so we did have, we had Hope Hampton go out. You know, we did a couple of test pits out there so that we have, you know, we have adequate soils out there for the property. You know, so we're showing that, you know, it's all, you know, that's a buildable lot from, you know, from a subsurface waste perspective. The Water District has, so there's a water, you know, there's a large water main that comes across the Sullivan's other property that's adjacent, which stops there at the end of Gelardi, but that has since been, there's, there's been a private extension that's been done further into the subdivision. And so the district has confirmed, you know, from, you know, from their main, you know, that there's adequate water supply for this property and that they have the ability to tie in.
Okay.
So. So that's the big, you know, that's, I think, kind of the, you know, the high level overview of what, you know, of what we're, you know, what we're bringing before you. Again, it's a, it's considered a minor modification, you know, because we're, we're not creating a new lot here.
You're not adding a lot to the subdivision.
You know, this is a, you know, we've got an existing lot, you know, that's here. You know, we, you know, we went down through in terms of the application standards that are listed by the town. You know, there's some that, you know, that we answered and some that I, you know, that I identified that, well, we, we should really get a waiver, you know, for some of these submission requirements because they just weren't applicable to this particular request.
Come on, yeah?
So with the water main coming in, have you had any discussions with the fire chief about any issues that they may have?
Yes. So, yeah, actually, I had a conversation with, with Jay Ever yesterday. So the hydrant that you, you know, that you see that's located on the plan, it's there at the corner. So that hydrant is actually tagged out. So it's, it's not, you know, listed as, it's not a, you know, let's say that it's not a functional hydrant. You know, the district has tagged it out. But there is a new hydrant that is further, you know, that's further on down, down the road at the intersection that was, that was recently put in. I believe it was put in past, you know, two, three years. Chief did have some comments that were provided in, you know, in the memo to you all.
About the subdivision?
Correct, about the subdivision just in general. Yep.
So can we just go down through the board and ask, I have a few questions, but I'll happily go last. We just go down from, from left to right, if that's okay, Peter?
I'm good.
Yep. Mike, what else you got?
I guess there was a list of waivers and that was put together in the town memo. What are the waivers that you're looking for?
Sure. So we can...
I'm not sure if they're the same as the memo.
So if I can bring you back. Werner, your, your, your application, submission requirements, review slash waiver requests.
Correct.
If we go down through there, I know they're all enumerated.
That's right. Yeah.
Mike, do you want to go down through, we can just go down through that list and tick them off?
Yeah, if they're just, I was wanting to check to make sure they were the same ones that were in the memo from town staff.
Well, Nadia, can, can you confirm that you're, you're happy that you've, you've basically taken the the supporting memo that you sent to the planning board and that it, it does sync up with the waiver request that Werner has made, rather than us going down through them?
So they're, it's been checked, okay.
That's, that's what Mike's looking for.
Where it says waiver requested is what we pulled from the applicant, from the application.
I trust that. Yeah.
Yes, I'm happy to go down through the list that's in the application.
I just wanted to make sure they were both synced up, and if Nadia says they're synced up, that works for me.
That's good, but I will, maybe after everyone's asked their questions, just go through it just to make sure that then the board is, is comfortable with, with granting those requests. I, I don't think I have a problem, but it'd just be good to tick them off that way. So let's do that at the end.
Okay. Yep.
Then there was the... Have we addressed the calculations for net residential area? Which was item 20 in the memo? Because is that the, the new with the adjusted parcel coming in, the 40,442 square feet?
So if I, if I can help there, Mike, I read that too. I read it several times, went back and looked at the ordinance. And my take on that is that the Code Office is rightly quoting from the from the subdivision regs, saying that if you're, if you're looking, you, you need enough land for however many lots you're doing, and you need to subtract 15% for envisioned or otherwise roads and, roads and parking. Is, is I think what the allocation is. And, and here, we, we have an existing lot. There's, there's clearly not going to be a road on it. Right? So I don't think it makes sense to just say you got to carve 15% out of every lot, regardless of how it's used. I, I would like to ask how you made the calculation of net residential area for that lot? Because I saw that you did, you did make an adjustment, and it's on the order of 5%. What's your thinking there?
Sure. So, you know, essentially what we, you know, what we did provide for in, in the, in the deductions for net. So, you know, there's no wetlands on the property, and so we've provided, you know, a letter from a wetland soil scientist that supports that. So there's no deductions for that. The only other deduction, you know, that's there for this particular lot.
There's no easements.
Well, there is. There's, there's the Water District easement, you know, and so there's a small triangular piece of, of the property where the Water District easement comes across it. And we do have that indicated. We do have that calculated and indicated on the plan. And so that right of way, that deduction comes out to be 1,992 square feet for that triangular piece of land that is subject to the Water District's easement.
Ah, okay, okay. So you couldn't build there. You're not allowed to put, you know, a residence
Correct. Yes.
for that easement. And so it gets subtracted.
That's right. That land area gets subtracted.
Is that the sole, is that the amount of your allowance?
Correct. Yes, that's the sole amount that's...
So there's no, there's no parking lot on this. I mean, if you were building a subdivision, you might have residential parking or whatever, and that 15% when you're starting out makes, makes some sense.
Yeah. Or if you were doing, you know, like if you were doing, I, you know, I suspect a multiplex project, right? You know?
Then it's, then it's certainly obvious.
Something like that, right? You would have an area for parking.
So, so I was inclined to go along with the waiver request, but, but I think we need to talk about our comfort level with that.
In terms of net residential area, I will say that we don't issue building permits for nonbuildable lots. So if the net residential area does not include that minus 15%, it's not a buildable lot as far as the Code Enforcement Office is concerned. Because it would not meet the net residential area requirements in our land use ordinance.
Oh, you're saying that any individual lot has to have 15%?
Yes, that's in the land use ordinance, not the subdivision regulations. So the, the subdivision ordinance is referring, refers back to Chapter 240 land use. So it's, it's for the whole town, not just when people are creating a subdivision.
And what's the rationale for that?
It, it's just in our ordinance. It was before any of our time when that was added in.
For roads?
And parking.
And parking, and neither of which is required for this lot.
Well, parking will be required. They'll need a driveway.
They'll need a driveway, but they're going to park in the garage maybe, or?
The, the ordinance is explicit. It does, it says 15% for roads and parking.
I don't, I don't think we've ever done that though, Nadia. Is this a new?
We, we do. In the office, we're very clear about it. We, at this point, we won't split, we won't create a lot that does not meet those net residential area standards. And when people apply for a building permit for a new dwelling, we do require a survey that shows that they have appropriate net residential area to meet those standards in Chapter 240.
Isn't that typically built into an existing, when we approve a subdivision in the first place, that's usually examined? This is just revision to an existing, they got roads, they got stuff.
Yes, but as, I mean, if you guys will think back to the Lily Pond subdivision that was in front of you a few months ago, we did clarify with the attorneys that 15% is reduced from the overall subdivision and then from each individual lot as well. So past practice would have us reduce that 15% from this lot in addition to the other, to the easement reduction.
Even if the entire subdivision had... Do you, do you think there are other lots in this subdivision that would trip this same section of the ordinance that would violate it?
It's possible. I haven't measured all of them, but the subdivision was created in 1971, so.
I understand. And, and that's, that's part of where I'm going here, is that I know the the regulations are asking us to only rule on the changes that are specifically being made. What you're doing is though, is you're giving the applicant a heads up that says, you're doing this for a reason. You're doing it so that there's no possibility of, of nonconformance being declared when you go to build a house on it. I think you're hearing that the Code Enforcement Office is telling you you haven't done enough. You need to transfer more land.
So, so, and I understand that, that, you know, this is a practice for new divisions. You know, I think I would argue here that what we have is, you know, we've, you know, we have a little bit of a different circumstance here where we have...
Let me stop you. I, I, I tried that, and what I just heard was, no, this is on any lot, whether it's part of a subdivision or not.
But you also have, you also have a separate section of the ordinance where you deal with nonconforming lots of record, right? And nonconforming lots of record, you know, are automatically state, they have a use, it's a single-family home. So certainly the, you know, the practice of the creation of any new lots, you know, after, you know, after, essentially after the date in which that language has been adopted makes perfect sense. But it doesn't mean that you now turn back and look at lots that were created even before, you know, net residential density was in place and render those now unbuildable.
Understood.
You know, so certainly you have, and you have language in the ordinance that supports that, that talks about, you know, lots that were on previous subdivision plans and nonconforming.
Well, well argued. I accept your argument. It just, I wasn't conditioned to accept that argument because I, I heard your opening remarks differently. That you were going to remove all possibility of this being concerned, considered a nonconforming lot. And I think what you're saying now is, it's already a nonconforming lot. It's going to remain a nonconforming lot, but it's going to have more land in it.
We're bringing it back to the land area that existed whenever it was originally approved.
Understood.
You know, I mean, we have slightly more than that, you know, but that was, you know, somewhat of a surveying exercise.
And later on, if the Code Enforcement Office says, I'm sorry, I'm not going to issue a building permit, you'll, you'll worry that as a separate issue.
Well, that's what we're attempting to deal with today. You know, we're attempting to get this, you know, to have the, you know, to have the lot recognized, you know, as, as essentially a modified, you know, plan, you know, within the subdivision.
A modified, nonconforming lot.
Correct. Yes. We're making it more, you know, we're certainly make it, making it more conforming.
Absolutely.
And, you know, both in, both in 71 and 79, you know, net resi, net residential cals didn't necessarily come along until there was a model subdivision ordinance that was adopted by the town. And, you know, those model subdivision regs, it really came about, you know, I'm going to say that was, you know, late 90s, early 2000s when, you know, when your kind of larger scale subdivision, you know, subdivision regs were, were put into place. But certainly when this was done, you know, net res wasn't a, you know, wasn't a calc at that point.
The other thing that wasn't in place at, at that time was findings of fact. But Nadia was kind enough to go back in the, in the record and pull out the minutes from the meeting. I don't know if you got a chance to see them, like they did get, they put on board. Everybody get a chance to look at those? I just wanted to read it just as we, as we make our decision. The excerpt is quite terse. Maybe it's a model for where we should be going on findings of fact, but it says, "The development plan was presented by Paul and Anthony Gelardi. The plan met requirements for area, drainage, roads, et cetera. Mr. Bradford abstained from signing the plan as the Gelardis are his clients, alternate member. Mr. Thompson signed in his place." So very succinct, but it says it met all the requirements at that time.
Correct.
So I think that supports your argument that this is a preexisting nonconformance.
And, and staff agrees with that perspective, that as the lot exists right now, it does meet the requirements for a lot of record.
Right.
As soon as you alter a lot of record, it's no longer, does no longer fall into that nonconforming lot of record category. So by adding land to the lot, and I would have to do some more talking with Galen and the Code Enforcement officers on whether the lot is buildable as it stands because it's a lot of record. But as soon as you alter that lot in any way, we no longer count it as a lot of record.
But, but you'd be making the argument that by adding land to it that it, right, right now, it's nonconforming, but arguably buildable at its current size.
I, I wouldn't guarantee that, but you, yes, you could argue.
Well, I'm not asking for a guarantee, but if you're saying it might not be, what would, what would be a possible reason?
I just, I don't want to guarantee anything that I might not be sure, but...
No guarantee made, but...
As far as I'm concerned, it's, it's a lot of record. It was created before 1985, and therefore the owners have, as far, as far as I understand, a legal right to build a single-family dwelling on the lot.
Just as others in that subdivision have built.
Yes.
All right. It, it seems wrong to think that we would rule against adding land to it to make it less nonconforming and then say that means that you can't build on it. That seems like a flawed approach.
I, I, I mean, I would agree with that position because under the, you know, under the general premise of zoning is that you're not allowed to make, certainly not allowed to make a nonconforming condition more nonconforming. That's, that's pretty explicit. But there's certainly nothing that prevents a property owner from taking a nonconforming condition and making it more conforming without the need to having to bring it into full compliance. The general premise of zoning is to attempt to try to eliminate nonconformities. And I think in circumstances where you can make things better, you certainly do. I mean, you certainly do that with, with many of the projects that come before you. But to, you know, I think to take the, you know, to take the position to say that, well, if you're going to do any modification to this, you now all of a sudden render it completely unbuildable. I, I don't know that that's the, you know, I, I think that's a bit of an extreme position to take.
It's not, it's not the position I would personally be, be able to take. Let, let me push it just a little bit further, and then I'll, I'll back away from it. Suppose, just as a thought experiment, you, you didn't come to this board, but you came with a building permit application, and you said this is a preexisting, nonconforming lot, and like a, here's where the test pits are dug. And I, I don't see any reason why you would be denied on the basis of the information we have here, that permit. And you went, you built a house, and then a few years later, you came back and you said, we're going to augment that land. We're going to, we're going to transition some from the property we own next door. We'd like to change the lot line. What would be the, you know, would you say, okay, you have to take down the house? No, obviously not. That would be, that would be absurd. So, so I'm inclined to, to, to say that this is, is a grandfather, nonconforming lot, and they're looking to, to increase the size of it from an adjacent property.
I'm just not sure where our authority stops as far as what we can say that would then tell the, that a permit, you know, you have to...
We don't get to say, we don't, we don't issue permits.
Right.
Okay. That's, that's the Code Enforcement Office.
Code's doing the permit, so...
And, and again, I'm, I'm saying to Werner, you just got a heads up that, that representative from the Code Enforcement here says, I'm not so sure that you're going to be able to build on this when you're done. That shouldn't prevent us from saying we don't have any problem with augmenting the land.
As long as, as long as that's what's being said, because I just realized we're not the ones that do building permits. Therefore, we can't say that. So we can agree today as far as our ordinances and what we cover. We're com- Our ordinances and what we cover, we're comfortable with it, but that does not guarantee that. Code enforcement will. Issue a building permit.
I I would argue that, um, approving a lot that doesn't meet your land use standards is. Not really the the purpose of coming to the planning board in the first place. It's, I mean, it's it's kind of the the purview of the board is to enforce the, is to assess applications that come in front of you for conformance with our land use ordinance. And as we've established, this lot does not conform with that land use ordinance.
What's come before us is a request to change a lot line.
To reduce its nonconformity.
Well, regardless of that, it's a minor revision to an existing subdivision. We had something about a year ago over off the River Road where we needed to move a lot line because of a gazebo and an apple tree. And it did, and whether the lot was buildable or not was really none of our business. They just wanted to move the lot line.
It had already been built on.
And we did, they did. They're moving a lot line.
So I, and we can agree to the lot line move.
And I think we can capture in the, in the findings of facts, the. The facts of this discussion here, that we had this discussion and that we. You know, I I I'd like to say that we as a board, uh, think that it is a a net decrease in the nonconformity of the lot.
Yeah, I think that's could be said.
Yeah.
So Werner, so the, uh, okay, so the, there's an area that's been conveyed, right? That's eight thousand seven hundred twelve feet.
Correct.
So is that still, has that actually been merged on a deed with the other parcel?
Long time ago.
Long time ago.
Yeah, a long time ago, seventy nine.
So it's, oh, wow, okay, so that's all one piece.
It's a done deed, different owner.
That's right, yep, you know, I mean, that, you know, property's been bought and sold since then. Certainly built upon, uh, you know, developed certainly in reliance of that and so, you know, and we're not, you know, I'm not here to. You know, what really weigh in on that particular piece. I will say, you know, just, you know, going back to, you know, what occurred here in nineteen seventy nine, you know, understand that in nineteen seventy nine. You had a forty thousand square foot minimum lot size and in seventy nine, this lot was turned into a thirty three thousand square foot lot. So. You know, arguably at that point, you know, it was made nonconforming. Which is what we're trying to rectify. Trying to bring it back to. The number that, you know, that existed when it was first approved.
Larry, I apologize. I went down and I said, Peter, do you have a mic? George, did I get to George? Did you have questions that that haven't been been dealt with?
I I just had one, let me think of it. If this had been recorded correctly. In nineteen seventy nine, when this transaction took place and it was all recorded with the findings of fact and the subdivision, minor revision of subdivision plan, you wouldn't be here today, right?
So I, yeah, I'd like to say no, um, you know, I mean, we wouldn't be, you know, I mean, if this, you know, if this, you know, that particular transfer had been blessed by the planning board at that point in time, then no. Right? Because now you'd have a, you, you know, you would have had a, uh, a re-recorded, an amended subdivision plan, uh, which is, you know. You know, what was alluded to in seventy nine.
What you're asking for now.
The, exactly, right. The board said, yes, we think this looks good. Come on back with a plan. And that stuff just, that stuff didn't happen.
Lost in antiquity.
Right, so for what reason?
Wounded haste, wet at leisure.
Yeah, I have no idea, but.
Mine, thanks.
So, so just hammering this a little more, so the conveyance occurred before the, uh, that there was a. A specification of the net residential area requirement, right?
Correct.
The net residential area requirement occurred after these two parcels were merged into a single.
Correct, yeah.
So to me, it sounds like it's a grandfathered situation here. That's what it sounds like.
Certainly for the adjacent, you know, for the adjacent lot, you know, the, you know, the issue that you have is that, you know, even in seventy nine, you had a forty thousand square foot minimum lot size. Right? And so a nonconformity was created at that point, you know, and so the argument of, you know, of that. Occurring, certainly it doesn't, it doesn't affect the adjacent lot, right? The adjacent lot, you know, under the same argument, regardless of its size, had land added to it. You know, whether that first one was nonconforming or not doesn't really matter.
Yeah.
Land was added to it, certainly added to the conformity of it, you know, in that regard.
You're talking about lot eleven, I get.
Yeah, right, yeah. Or, excuse me, that would be lot ten.
I beg your pardon.
Yeah, yeah, that one, again, you know, that, you know, regardless of the size of it, it certainly is, uh, you know. You know, is it, is it, is a done deal for sure, so. Yeah, and and I think it just, it it brings up, you know, the, you know, the question I think that you're really that you're struggling with and that the code office, you know, has. Has conveyed is, what do we do with this net? You know, what do we do with the net, you know, the net res calc, you know? And so, and and I I I understand the language, you know, and, you know, the language and when you look at the table. You know, like I I can understand where the interpretation comes from, you know, and I think that's, you know, and certainly if staff. You know, wants to interpret that for new subdivisions, I think that makes perfect sense. But I would, I would caution taking that interpretation when it comes, and I'm not just talking about this lot, but for any vacant lot that's, that is in town today. To take that position and then just to blanket say, you don't have fifteen percent additional land here and that makes it an unbuildable lot? I think is a, I think is a difficult position to take.
I I for one would would like to have a discussion with with the the town attorney as to the intent of that section of the ordinance. I would argue that it is intended to allow for roads and parking. And if you have an individual lot, it doesn't say driveways. And the word driveway is used all over the ordinance. It's not like the word wasn't, didn't occur to somebody. They know they chose something different. They said. Roads and parking.
You know, the other definition that you have to look at is you have to look at your minimum lot area definition, right? You know, and so throughout your ordinance, you have a definition of minimum lot area, the creation of a minimum lot, right? And that is a, has a slightly different definition than your net.
Correct.
Right? There are more deductions in the net than they, than there are in the minimum.
And what is the minimum lot size in this, in the zone?
And so if you draw, if you take it to the, this conclusion, it says, well, I have. The zone says I need forty thousand square feet of minimum lot size, right?
Minimum lot size, period.
But if I go with the net, well, I've added, I have to add six thousand square feet. So it's not really a minimum, that minimum lot size definition is, you know, may as well get tossed out at that point.
Unless you have the position that says, well, no, this lot has to be bigger than the minimum because it has roads and parking. Oh, this lot, does it have roads and parking? No, it's on the extremity. It's just got a driveway. I I I'm sorry, I, you know, not having been privy to the discussions with the attorney, I'm just giving you my own personal reaction.
The other thing too is that, you know, if you think of it from a, you know, from a mathematical exercise. You know, the minute you add, you know, more land to a lot, you know, so for every one square foot that you add, you're actually having to add one point one five square feet. You know, in order to, in order to chase that. You know, so for a three acre lot, now you're up to, now you're up to almost twenty thousand square feet, you know, that you're having to add to that.
This is in a time when we're looking as a, as a town and as a state to be more careful with how we. Allow for residences on on the land.
So I would just, you know, again, I I think, you know, is the ordinance perfect? Certainly not. You know, I think very clearly there's a conflict here between, you know, some definitions, right? You know, and so, and the ordinance is also clear that, you know, that says, well, whenever you've got a disagreement in the ordinance. Then, you know, the stricter of the two applies, right? I mean, that's the, you know, that's how those, you know, those types of issues are handled. You know, so that's what gives guidance to, you know, the staff on what do we do when there's a conflict here, while the stricter of the two has to apply. But it also, you know, gives deference to the code office to make the determination as to, you know, when you deal with net. Says, the definition says as determined by the code enforcement officer.
I understand.
You know, is what these, these numbers are, you know, so. You know, in past practice, and I'll just, I'll I'll speak outside of this application, you know, that was a discretion that was exercised. You know, there's not fifteen, there's not a road here, there's not parking here. You know, do we need to deduct another fifteen percent or require an additional fifteen percent in the lot? You know, for an improvement that. Either A, you know, isn't proposed or doesn't necessarily have the chance of ever showing up here. You know, because of the lot size, because of the fact that it's not able to be split. Right? So that, I mean, that may be an appropriate use of it for when you're looking at at a lot that has the potential, you know, to be split. Right? You know, there, you know, and certainly that's where it's used most commonly in the, in subdivision. You know, how do you come up with, how many numbers of units can we have? Right?
Right.
And you do the deductions and it gives you a number, right? It gives you a, you know, it gives you your density and that's, and typically you start that at the very beginning of the process with, you know, the overall parcel. You add another fifteen percent into each individual lot, well, that density number doesn't work. Right? You know, you've, you've thrown it all off now because you're now, you know, for a forty thousand square foot lot, you're adding another six thousand now for each one of them. Three acre lots, you're adding, you know, you're adding a half acre now to each one of them. So minimum lot size now doesn't really, doesn't really matter. And your density calcs to a certain extent. You know, are also somewhat invalid. Whenever you, whenever you do the math, it it, again, like it, it's a conflict, right? And you know, and I think that's, you know, that's clear, you know, it's a conflict and I think staff is just doing, is looking at the plain language of it and saying. Hey, I got a table here and it says the word net here.
Understood.
You know, so.
I guess what I heard was. Before the transfer, the existing lot eleven. Is permissible to get a building permit? I'm adding. Size to it and suddenly that's triggering something that makes it unable to get a building permit. Which kind of seems we're going. Less nonconforming. Yet because we're adding to it, we're taking out the grandfather. I think that's what I heard.
I I heard something a little different than that.
Okay.
I heard that due to a clerical error oversight or whatever back in nineteen seventy nine. A lot that was about forty thousand square feet. Became a lot that was only thirty three thousand square feet. Some, something didn't, somebody didn't follow through and you ended up with what then even was arguably a nonconforming lot. Not, not a grandfathered, nonconforming lot either in nineteen seventy nine. It was, it was approved at forty thousand in seventy one and in seventy nine, somebody took land from it and made it thirty three thousand. And if somebody had come into the code enforcement office there, they would have said. Oh, you're gonna have to go to the variance board here, here, this is, this isn't got forty thousand square feet minimum lot size. And so I'm I'm hearing that today, uh, the applicant is in here saying, we want to add back as many square feet as got taken away from it due to this clerical error. And we're hearing a concern that says, maybe you ought to add fifteen percent more. May- maybe you ought to add another. You know, whatever it takes to get you up to forty, how how many? Forty one, forty six thousand, how how many?
Whatever fifteen.
Whatever fifteen percent is on forty thousand.
I'm not hearing that. I may have this completely wrong. What I understood from the.
That we're talking about.
The planning office is that they are not willing to say right here, right now, that they would certify that you can build a lot on these land. They very well may be able to, the way it is right now. And if they add property on to it, uh, it's still gonna be up to the planning office or to, yeah, the code enforcement to decide whether there's a buildable lot there.
I agree with that and I did hear that.
So what I hear, uh, the the applicant coming and asking is, there is an existing subdivision. And we would like to change the boundary line on this one lot. We own both pieces of property and would like to merge them together, which is a minor revision to an existing subdivision.
Right.
That's, and I, I. On the surface of it, I don't see any reason to, uh, quarrel with that. If they want to add the land on to it, they can do it. If it's buildable or not, that's, that's between them and code enforcement.
So 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 that's what I put to Werner earlier and I said, that's fine, we can do that. And I heard Werner come back to me saying. Well, we really wanted to put to bed the issue of buildability of whether, was it, was that a word? Whether it's buildable or not, uh, today.
Yeah, I don't know.
And and we we're not in the business of issuing the permit and the only representative from the code enforcement office here tonight is saying. Oh, I'm not so sure I can do that. I I think we can approve this application and record. The the, the germ of this discussion, uh, pits of this discussion in the, in the findings and approve it, but. I I can't, I can't speak for the code enforcement office and I think they're speaking for themselves right here tonight.
Sure, no, and that's understood, right? Yeah, a hundred percent, you know, and that's, you know, it's, you know, I think it's, um. You know, it's, obviously we're, you know, we're here to avoid exactly that circumstance, right? You know, like, I'm, you know, we're not, uh, we're not doing anybody any favors if we go through this process, you know, only, you know, only to, you know. Render, you know, a lot, not buildable, you know, based on, based on an interpretation, you know, so obviously that doesn't do us, that doesn't serve us.
That's a separate discussion, isn't it?
Can I just say, is that ultimately that's what you're trying to get is a buildable lot? Correct?
Correct, yes, we're just, we're.
So if if these guy, I'm just saying, if these guys make a decision to do what you're proposing and it's still potentially nonbuildable. Wouldn't it be easier to go to the code enforcement office and have them look at it and decide what you want to do is make a buildable lot? Do I need to add more land? Do I, or it's buildable as you propose, rather than have these guys vote on something and you end up still with a nonbuildable lot? Wouldn't it be easier to go to code enforcement, get the answer to them for that question and then come back and make the proposal before the board?
Or you're trying to make a test case that ends up going to the variance board?
No, not looking, not looking for a test case.
I think you're trying to get a buildable lot, right? And you're kind of hearing it, we we can do this, they can do it, but you might not end up with a buildable lot, so why is everyone doing this right at this point in time? You kind of waited forty years to do it anyways, right? So. Maybe you go have a conversation with the code enforcement and see, do I need to add another couple thousand feet to make this work? And then come back and ask for the additional thousand, couple thousand feet that you're gonna need. And I I think everyone would be probably willing to approve that, but I don't think they want it. I think they're trying to get to the point where they're not going to do it and you still have a nonbuildable lot.
Sure.
If you're trying to build on it. If you're not trying to build on it, fine, but if you, I think you're probably trying to build on it or sell it.
Yeah, no, understood, right, and and certainly there's, you know, no issues with having that conversation, yep.
I just, I just think you probably want to have the conversation before these guys have to vote on something and give you what you want, it doesn't work for.
We could potentially continue this initial review until you add that, whatever conversations, i- if there are conversations you still want to have, so that 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 wouldn't be a problem. I I do still have some questions to go through at some point, but.
Sure, yeah, happy to do that, yep.
Well, I was just interested to see that this is not in any sort of floodplain and the elevation is what, ten feet above sea level or something?
Correct, yeah, floodplain is certainly, you know, way for, you know, way further back from this property.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
I just had a detail or two, let me see if I can. Remember where I wrote it. Just for nits, okay, when when I go through the application on the first page, it says what lots are involved, map twenty three, lot six. It's it's really lot thirty five. And thirty six A is not in the Goose Rock subdivision. So I I don't think that thirty six A is, and when it says the location of the property Goose Fair, does thirty six A doesn't, doesn't jive with that?
So thirty six A is the lot that we're we're pulling.
Stealing from.
Right.
But that's.
So we have two lots that are involved in this?
I I figured that out. I'm just sort of saying if that. If there was a way to clarify that, that. When when you, after you read it all and you come back, then it. Then it's clear that the two, there's two lots in question, but everything up to that point was talking about. Want to differentiate between. Lot eleven, which is lot thirty five and. Whatever the real name of the the land we're stealing from or borrowing from, taking from is lot thirty six A.
Sure.
Just, it wasn't clear to me at first and when somebody looks at this.
Yeah, so.
Not not that this would ever come back. If, if, not, not that this would ever come back.
Yeah. So just to, to be clear, in the second paragraph, it states the proposal is to transfer point two acres of land from lot thirty-six A to lot thirty-five.
I'm sorry, where does it say that?
So that's in the cover letter.
Oh. Let me go back to that. Transfer from lot thirty-six A to block thirty-five on that map. That is clear. That is clear.
And certainly if we choose to, to change that number, then we'll revise that cover letter.
Without nitpicking this any more than I already am, I just want to tell you that when I read it, it wasn't clear at first that we were taking something that wasn't in the Goose Fair subdivision and moving it to the Goose Fair subdivision that.
Sure.
And, and, and I chose to highlight it on that sentence I just quibbled about, but that, that's where I was when I read that and I was still confused. Probably not having read your cover letter carefully enough, but then reading the next paragraph under general information, that did even less to help me because it says, reconfiguration of conversion or conversion of land from a budding parcel twenty-three, six, thirty-six A. My question was, is this parcel in the subdivision? To proposed Goose Fair at the southeast corner of map twenty-three, block six, lot twenty-five. So, so there is no lot twenty-five involved in this, is there?
Yeah, it should have been thirty-five.
I think so.
Excuse me. Yep.
I think so.
Yep. That was a keyboard slip.
Which, which is all.
On that, on that description there.
This is coming across as a, as a, as something that says this was messy or that this was, this was an incredibly intricate thing that you've, you've described here and you've done it quite well. All I'm telling you is that the flow, I didn't get it at first and if you do end up updating this, at a minimum, update that error.
Yep, absolutely.
And, uh.
Yep.
Okay. My comment next to it says, translate this, please, but now, now I get it. Thanks. Now I wanted to just go through and make sure we understood the waivers and, and agree with them. I went back and, and, and again, we're, we're looking at this only, not in terms of the, all the subdivision regs, but only for the change that you're making. That's, that's what's subject to review here by the planning board. And so I was surprised that you provided septic in test pit data. Is that because you had to do that anyway to see whether it was worth pursuing this?
It certainly, it's something that's done regardless, right? You know, so we know that's information that's going to be needed for a building permit and so, you know, that's.
So that was welcome.
Data that was done, was part of due diligence.
All right. I, I don't know that we would have insisted on that, just adding land to it. Already must have been okay. It was already approved at one point in time, grandfathered. First one is the number of acres. Request to provide only for the land area subject to review request. You okay with that? The ability to serve from KKW is provided. What's the next waiver? Help me out.
The road requirements, I believe, road standard requirements.
Which is J K? No. What, what's the letter on that?
Number sixteen in the memo. I'm not sure what it is in the cover letter.
Oh, okay, okay. Why don't we use the memo then?
I think the next, the next waiver was, so in, in the application, it's listed under L. And this was the list of construction items with cost estimates that will be completed by the developer prior to the sale of lots.
Not, not applicable.
Financial commitment piece, because that, again, that refers to subdivision improvements of which there are none.
We okay with that?
Yeah, that's number fourteen, right?
That's number fourteen in the memo and it's L in, in the application. The request, the next request is N, which is item sixteen for street plans. And, and again, I don't, I don't have any problem with, with saying, okay with that. We don't, we don't need that. The next one is O, which I'm guessing is seventeen.
Correct. That's the creation of a, of a stormwater management plan.
I would agree. That's not needed. P. Erosion and sedimentation control plan. This is not, no construction going on here. It's a, it's a paper exercise. I don't think we need to. Everybody okay?
Yes.
Disposal. The next one, Q. No debris. Waiver's okay. Speak if, if you, if you disagree, I'll assume we're okay with it otherwise. Estimate of net increase in taxable valuation, and I agree that's a negligible change. I, I would, I don't have a need for that. Code office okay with that?
Yep. I confirmed with the assessor as well. She agrees. No.
Good.
A very negligible increase.
I've just gone through, Werner, your list. Are there any?
We didn't, I, I don't believe we suggested any additional waivers.
Okay. Thank you. So we'd be okay with those. I, I wanted to comment on the additional comments. You alluded to the fire chief having some, some concerns about the, the existing road and a desire to, you know, have the residents consider making it more conducive to, to being served by the fire department and again, in the spirit of us really assessing what's before the board and the changes to the plan before the board, I don't think we have purview over that, but I would like to include it in any findings that we have, that, that we had this discussion, that the fire chief raised this concern and that everyone agreed that it would be a good thing to do at some future date. Would, would that be agreeable? I can restrict it to, we just had this discussion.
Yeah, I don't have a, you know, my only concern is that I, I just don't want those comments to imply in any way, shape or form that the Sullivan's are responsible for upgrading the width of the roads in the Goose Fair subdivision.
Right. And, and that would have, that would have to be made clear. Really, what I was anticipating is this might lend some impetus to the HOA for considering that change at some future date if they thought that.
I mean, I think it's.
There was a claim made and.
I think it's a reasonable conversation for the chief to have with the, you know, with the homeowners association. You know, I think it would probably benefit, you know, you know, the subdivision and the fire department as a whole, just to identify, you know, some of the, you know, specific pinch points, you know, that might exist out there and, you know, and see where, you know, where improvements could be made.
So you're pointing out that doing this here doesn't really alert the HOA. It just alerts one member of the HOA.
Uh, it, it certainly, it alerts folks within two hundred feet is per the notice requirements.
Do you know if that's everybody in the subdivision?
No, it's not.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that, guys?
Well, I just had one.
Yeah.
So the, the objective of your application really is to gain approval of a slight increase to an existing subdivision. Right? Because this lot thirty-six A was not part of the original subdivision, so you're expanding the original subdivision. Is that correct?
So.
In, 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 in an effort to create a conforming lot, so you don't have to come back and ask for permission to build something on a non-conforming lot? Is that, is that where this is going?
Yes. Yes. So we're adding this additional land to this particular lot.
So you're, which in effect increases the size of the subdivision?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
But doesn't increase the number of lots. Right.
Oh, no, no, no. Okay. But, but, but the point is it, it increases the size of the existing subdivision by a little bit and by the lot in attempt to make it a conforming lot, so that you don't have to apply for a, app, a building permit on a non-conforming lot, essentially, right?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Well, it's clear. So your next step is you're going to go talk to the code enforcement and see if.
We'll have a discussion certainly with staff.
And, and then, and then you come back and
Yep.
we can resolve this. Okay. I got it.
Do, do you want us? I, I think for the purposes of us deciding whether or not to okay this addition, I, I'd declare this, I'd contend that this is a complete application. If, if you feel like you're, you want to consider the option of modifying this application in some substantial way, we could, we could defer that.
I would encourage you to not consider it complete if you are still waiting on additional information. So whether, whether that be just confirmation from the applicant that they're not going to code or that they are, but if you are anticipating any additional information, I would urge you not to consider the application complete until you know whether it's.
I would agree with that and I'm not anticipating any additional information unless Mr. Gilliam tells me that I, I should, I should anticipate.
I don't have, I don't have any objections to that. Yeah, I think regardless, we're coming, you know, we're coming back to have a, you know, to have a further conversation with it.
You're going to have to do that about a building permit in any case.
Well, and even just in terms of having a conversation with the board, yeah, just, we, you know, we'd be having, you know, we're going to be back for another meeting anyways, so, you know, regardless of whether, you know, it's a, you know, declaration of it, of completeness or not, you know, again, completeness doesn't necessarily mean that you agree with everything on, on, in terms of what's proposed.
It's a gate to the public hearing, that's all.
But, but yeah, I, I don't have any object, any objection to a, to a continuation.
Okay. And then, then, then let's do that. Let, let, let me propose to continue this pending basically input from the applicant that says that they've had their discussions with the code enforcement office and they're either going to make a change or continue with it unchanged. Yeah. Fair enough?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll second that. Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Werner. Anybody interested in wearing the, the case manager hat for this? I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, oh, yeah. Did, did I see a volunteer or was that a?
Yep.
All right. Mike West, we'll, we'll take this on. And that looked like such a simple one when I read it.
That's right. I thought, wow, I should have slammed drunk on this one. Nope.
Too funny.
He did.
Ready for round two?
I'll be with you in just a nanosecond here. All right, moving on. Item three, two, five, zero, two, zero, one. Application, Richard Woodman, ninety-three School Street. And we had the public hearing last meeting. We, we had the initial review last, last, last meeting. This will be a public hearing this evening. We hear from the applicant, please. And, and can I ask just, just to begin with, just so you can know, is, is there anyone in the Zoom audience that's listening in on this?
No, we have two people.
Okay, thank you. Introduce yourself, please, and maybe give us a brief summary of what, what we all went over last time.
Sure. My name's Richard Woodman, looking to add a twenty-four by twenty-four garage structure on our site to provide additional workshop space and pretty simple, straightforward, no additional parking, employees, no major tree removal. I guess we went through it last week. There's, it was talking about the lighting issues. We'll be in compliance with code when we have any external lighting. It's a non-disruptive operation that shouldn't interfere with any of our neighbors' quiet enjoyment. Look forward to any comments the board has. How much you want me to go through it?
No, no, it's good for me. Anybody else? We start with the board. Any questions? Again, let's go left to right. Peter?
I have to quickly. Mr., are you on town water?
Yes.
And there's, here's on one of the drawings, but it's, I think from a, a plan from two thousand and seven, that there's a hydrant at the northwest corner of the lot, roughly?
No, the nearest hydrant would be well, to the west or my neighbor Chip Ziner's, right, right at the entrance to Buttonwood Lane, which is the lot towards Consolidated School from, from my lot.
Okay. And that's an active hydrant?
Yeah, yeah, I believe it is.
And so if you, if you had a fire on the property, that's where they'd be drawing?
Yeah.
Drive water?
It's probably a hundred and fifty feet from the structure, maybe.
Okay. So I'm.
Anything else, Peter?
No.
Michael?
I didn't have any questions.
George? No. Larry? No. I, I didn't have any other except to confirm that there's, do, do you have a, a, a main DEP permit pulled on this for any reason? I don't think we talked about, no. Okay. Not, not required.
So you, we'll just have you guys cross that out in the findings of fact.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing then. Is anyone in the Zoom audience would like to speak to this?
No hands are raised.
Thank you. Then we'll, we'll close the public hearing. That went smoothly.
I'd make a motion that the application is complete and we approve, and we approve the application.
You want to approve it? Is there a second for that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
Thank you, board.
Sounds good. We, we do have, Richard, a, a findings that Peter prepared in advance and, and got input, I think for most of the team and prepared to read that.
Okay.
If, want to wait for that and we'll, we'll have it all taken care of.
Yeah, absolutely.
The, the applicant doesn't have to stay for the reading.
It'll be available for you.
Okay.
Tomorrow or the next day?
Tomorrow.
Is that, tomorrow?
It's only five pages.
Now, you don't, you don't want to stay.
Does that help?
Although he has a very pleasant reading voice. What, what do they tell you? When you get the answer you want, stop asking questions?
Good luck.
All right. Thank you.
Very much.
And good luck with the, with the work going forward. Well, that's right. It always is though. Good fortune. You want to go ahead and do that?
Sure.
First taste?
So this is the application of Richard Woodman, construction of a one-story workshop, ninety-three School Street. Following site plan reviews pursuant to Kennebunkport land use ordinance held on nineteenth February, twenty twenty-five. Public hearing held on five March, twenty twenty-five. Kennebunkport Planning Board makes the following findings of fact and conclusions and renders the following decision, subject to the conditions enumerated below. Findings of fact are as follows. Applicant is Richard Woodman and the owners of record are Richard Woodman and Kristen Woodman, husband and wife as joint tenants of fifty-eight North Street, Kennebunkport. The property is located at ninety-three School Street, Kennebunkport. Property is identified as map twenty-one, block four, lot thirty-six on the municipal tax assessors map. The property is located in the free enterprise zone, the shoreland and resource protect zones overlay a portion of the property in the rear, well aware, away from where the proposed structure would be located. The site is sixteen, six point sixteen acres in size. Applicant demonstrated a legal interest in the property by providing a trustee's deed for the property conveyed to Richard Woodman and Kristen Woodman, husband and wife, as joint tenants on the second of November, twenty twelve. which was recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds Book sixteen, four, five, eight, page three eighty-nine through three ninety-one. Property is currently used for commercial purposes as a boat repair shop and outdoor boat storage facility, which is a conditional use in the free enterprise zone. There is adequate access, egress and parking on the property to accommodate the incremental structure. In an application dated five February twenty twenty-five, the applicant is proposing to build up to a six hundred and seventy-two square foot, twenty-four by twenty-eight single structure garage with a pitched roof on a concrete slab. The structure will be wood-framed and sided, insulated and heated and will be used as an accessory metal and mechanical workshop. Because the increases in floor area constitutes an expansion of the conditional use, planning board review and approval is required. The proposed structure will be served by an electrical connection from the property's existing main workshop building via an overhead wire connection. There will be no plumbing or running water in the new structure. Structure will be sited on a previously and substantially cleared parcel, requiring modest grading leveling for the slab foundation. The parcel is appropriately situated beyond both lot line and seventy-five-foot stream setbacks. The applicant proposes no incremental signs or needed landscaping on the property and will require only minimal grading around the structure to assure precipitation runoff from the roof is directed away from the building. Applicants stated that the outdoor lighting will consist of no more than a small light fixture by the entry door, which will comply with chapter two forty-five requirements. The applicant stated that the small amounts of solvents, paints and/or oils may be stored in a new workshop, in the new workshop, but will be held in leak-proof and vented secondary containment cabinets. The applicant requested a waiver from submitting site plan reviews for road curbs, bumpers and sidewalks, landscaping, lighting, signs and proposed use of floor area, which ordinances two forty dash ten point six C, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen, and the planning board approves those requests. Pursuant to the requirement of article ten, ten, A of the land use ordinance, the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes negative ruling on one or more of the following identified findings, which would otherwise compel denial. And with respect to A, B, C, those are yes. D, the provisions for buffers on-site landscaping provide for adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development. The finding is N A, but there's a note the board recognized and requested a waiver from buffering landscape requirements. Subsection E, F, G and H are yes. A note on H, which is the design of the site, will not result in significant flood hazards or flood damage and is in conformance with the applicable flood hazard protection requirements. There is, finding is yes. The note is, planning board has confirmed that the proposed development is taking place outside of the flood plain. Section I, adequate provision has been made for disposal of wastewater or solid waste for the prevention of ground or surface water contamination. The finding is non-applicable. J, adequate provision has been made to control erosion or sedimentation. Finding is yes, but the note says applicant requested a waiver and was given the low, given the low impact of the proposed project. Item K, adequate provision has been made to handle stormwater runoff or other drainage problems on-site. Finding is yes. Note, the board recognized a waiver request from submission, given the small footprint of the accessory building. Item L is a yes. Item M, adequate provision has been made for the transportation, storage and disposal of the hazardous substances and materials as defined by state law. Finding is yes, and the note is, applicant confirmed to the board that only a small amount of oil, paints and solvents is being proposed to be stored in the new accessory structure with secondary containment. Item N and O are both yes. Item P, existing off-site ways and traffic facilities could safely and conveniently accommodate the increase in traffic generated by the development. As far away from the development as effects of the deployment, development can be traced with reasonable accuracy. The finding is non-applicable. The note is, applicant confirmed to the board that the new structure is not expected to generate any incremental traffic to the property. Any negative findings by the board means the application has been denied. The application is otherwise complete. Conclusions, article ten, ten, A of the land use ordinance mandates that the planning board shall approve a site plan application unless it makes one or more findings that would otherwise compel denial. As noted above, the board makes no such findings. Decision, the site plan application identified above is hereby approved. Conditions of approval, if any, pursuant to the article ten point eleven and ten point twelve E are two. Number one, any exterior lighting on the new structure shall conform to chapter two forty-five of the town's exterior lighting ordinance and details of any proposed exterior fixtures shall be supplied to the code enforcement officer with the building permit application. And two, the applicant shall comply with all terms and conditions of the Town of Kennebunkport ordinance as well as the main DEP approvals. Dated five March twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. We signed both copies. We passed them down as, as you went. Initial the, the, the one-erada and give them back to Nadia. That, that concludes the items on the, on the main agenda. There is some other business. I'd like to start by giving the floor to Larry, though.
Okay. Well, it's been my great privilege to serve on the planning board for some few years, but my personal circumstances have changed and I'm in the process of moving from Kennebunkport. So I'm gonna, I need to retire from the board tonight and I wish everybody a good fortune in future. It's been really fun. I've learned a lot on this board, but it's time for me to go. So I appreciate your understanding and I look forward to meeting you in public in the future.
It's been great.
It's been an extreme pleasure. You're always welcome back anytime.
Thank you. I'll be in the audience if I'm still here.
Where are you heading?
And, and just, on, on behalf of the board of selectmen, who I mentioned this to last meeting, they thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Same from town staff. We've appreciated your insight in all of the applications we've reviewed.
I appreciate that, yeah.
Just on a personal note, Larry and I are neighbors and it really has been a pleasure to work with him. He's, he's added, like, like everyone who's, who's contributed to the board, they bring their particular background with them, but, but Larry's civil engineering background has been particularly helpful on, on so many occasions. It's, it's going to be a loss that's challenging to, to, to fill. I'll miss him.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Okay. Well, I just wanted to do that first because the, the, the other thing we wanted to talk about was.
Was a root canal?
Yeah, we have some class that you can walk across. That'd be great.
We're gonna put a fire, please, put the fire on. To be a permanent member of the security council.
Yeah. What do y'all wanna do about officers?
This does, this does save you the discomfort of choosing which alternate it gets to be.
Well, yes, just, both alternates are now.
This is the silver, the silver lining.
That's right.
I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how silver it is to the two, the two gentlemen and, and who were alternates. Yes, please, George.
The, the, the gentle board member on my right just resigned. That leaves us with.
Four.
Three members and an alternate. And I think in the bylaws, as we were looking at them, that there was something to do about that in terms of electing officers. My suggestion would be that the two alternates are promoted, whatever that process is, to be full members of the board and at the next meeting that we propose and elect officers of the board.
Assuming that the, the, the two, two alternates are willing to be promoted. I mean, given what you've seen here so far, we haven't, we haven't scared you off.
Well, Joe may not.
Where, where is Joe?
He's, he's on vacations in Hawaii.
Oh, the poor guy, that's right. He, he came back to me, I, I sent out a request, you know, that, that y'all look, look at the planning board bylaws and all and, and hopefully we'd have that discussion at this meeting. We, we can talk about whether we still wanna do that or wait for Joe, but Joe, Joe came back to me. He says, I'm writing to you on my iPad. I'm over Montana at this point. Oh, the poor guy. So that's good.
Just so you know, the process is if the two alternates want to become, accept the open positions, the board, if you guys have the ability to accept them yourselves, the select board does not have to. We've already appointed you as alternates, so we don't have to appoint you as permanent members.
One last hurdle.
I, I think Joe said last time that he was willing, so I, I think that hurdle's been crossed. I'd like to vote even in their absence.
I, I would propose that we accept both Joseph and Peter as.
As soon as possible.
I would second that. All those in favor? You don't get to vote yet. Freeze a quorum, we got you. That was close.
Raise, raise your right hand.
All right, so, no more alternates for the moment, but we do have a five-person board and we'd ask the help of the select board in putting out the word and how much fun we have here.
Yes.
Oh, gosh.
The camaraderie.
Even Werner comes back.
Can't stay away.
That's right.
Can't stay away. All right. Let me just make myself a note here. I'm trying, in Nina's absence, I'm trying to be more diligent about taking notes. It's not my forte, but we're working on it.
If, if the board is interested in voting on the bylaws tonight, it's not voting necessarily strictly to approve them. It's just voting on sending this language as is to the town attorney for review.
I would caution against that.
Okay.
I think there's, there's still too many ambiguities in here, three or four of them anyway, that we need to slog through.
Okay. Are you guys interested in doing some of that tonight or would you like to post-pone?
Kick can down the road?
You wanna come back? I'd love to have Joe here.
You might wanna stick around for this.
Yeah.
Although you did retire.
I've got some, I've got some comments, but they're not substantive beyond one. I've got comments.
Oh, look. Do you have any comments?
I do not have comments.
Have you looked at it?
I have not.
And you're not gonna look at it? That's what I'm hearing.
I, I will do my very best to do my duty.
Can I, can I offer that we go down through but with sort of a, a thought that says we don't have to resolve everything, but let's at least get everyone's concerns out and if we can resolve some of them, great. Maybe we'll set a, a goal for eight o'clock, something like that.
Sounds good to me.
Would you like me to pull up a copy on the big screen?
Would you mind put up the, the bylaws as they exist today without, with all the change history and everything and comments and all of that? Just, just the words.
The one that you sent out?
That's what I'd like to see.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I thought, I, I had to get rid of all the history to, to make any sense of it.
Yeah, it was driving me crazy. I was having trouble.
So you'd like the, the blank copy?
I'd like the planning board bylaws with all the changes we made, but without the comments and mark, you know, what used to be, just the result. If you accepted all changes and deleted all comments.
What was, what was sent out in the last one was?
The last thing I sent out was me on an email. It didn't come from the code enforcement office, that's all, so.
As long as we end up with the same clean copy, it's.
Bear with me, I'm doing this blind.
No, take, take.
I, I don't have a, a copy without all of the strike-throughs and underlines as we haven't accepted any of the changes. So I can pull up the original language.
No, 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 that, that won't do it all. That, well, we, we might wanna reference that, but we need something that says, what are we asking to approve? That's readable. And I, I, the email I sent out, Nadia, and I know it copied you on it had, had a, a clean copy of that.
All right, let me pull that up.
See if you can find that. I don't send you too many.
One that I had while he's looking that up.
Yeah.
It says that we support the town's comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
At some point it would be, I would find beneficial a presentation or something on what this thing is, the comprehensive plan.
How, how would you, how would you think? I, I, I support that. In fact, I'd like to talk about education in general on a lot of different fronts, but other than reading it, Mike, do you think?
I don't know if that's something, whoever owns this plan.
The growth, the growth planning committee owns it.
Well, then have a representative from the growth planning committee talk us through it.
The, the comprehensive plan gets addressed, whatever, ten years?
Yeah, they just, just last year got, got approved, updated.
It's the basis for every ordinance we have. All the ordinances derive from the town approving. We want this character of town, we want the town to this. From that, we, what they derive is, well, we can have this size lot size, we can have this separation of things, we can have these neighborhoods.
It's the vision statement.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would just be, I, I mean, I could read a dry piece of paper, but I thought it would be.
It's not dry and it's an inch thick, that's all.
Comprehensive.
Do, do you think that there is a presentation that the growth planning committee has? That's sort of, you know, maybe that they made to the select board, for example?
On the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, on the comprehensive plan.
I'm not sure. It's possible. Just like as a quick review of the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, something that maybe was what, twenty minutes long? You don't wanna.
Yeah, I, I just, because I.
A, a good overview.
Yeah, I haven't read the plan and I'm, this here says that I'm supposed to be doing things to support it and I don't know what I should.
So, so I think that's good. I don't think it needs to change what's in the bylaws, but for example, it also says that we follow the main statutes. You know, and we're, we're not gonna get a quick presentation on that either. It's, some of the stuff is quite burdensome in terms of, you know, really digging in and, and knowing what, what to do and that we don't, we don't have all of that at, at our fingertips.
And, and that is part of why you have Galen and I as staff liaisons. We are there, you know, paid to be more experts in that subject matter. So, you know, we know the comprehensive plan pretty thoroughly. If you're interested in a, in a quick version of it, we do, there's a volume one and volume two. Volume one is the quick version. It's basically the Spark Notes version of the comprehensive plan and that's available on the town website. And if we've ever printed you a copy, volume one is also in that and it's a much shorter, maybe like this thick document that just highlights of the comprehensive plan.
So what if I, as, as a, as a start, what if I send an email with a pointer to that?
Yep.
Okay.
That'd be a great, that'd be a great start.
And that's, that's a helpful comment to say, look, read, read volume A. And that'll, that'll be.
And that's the purpose of it, to give people a more accessible version of the comprehensive plan that's a little bit more comprehensible.
But the good news is, is that it's not ten years old or eleven, I think twelve years old by the time the last one was updated about a year or two ago. So it's, it's pretty current, current view, although still we're talking, you know, this change is being spoken about all, all the time, obviously.
It's living.
Okay, so I'll, I'll take that action, just send that out. So, so this is the one that I.
Yes, this is the clean.
And all this is, is I, I took what was just up on the board and I accepted all comments and I, I, I deleted all comments and I accepted all changes. So, if I did that correctly and I, I tried very hard to be careful, this will stand us in good stead. So, so if we could just go down through it and as we each, my, my first comment is in the goal section here. Anybody have one before that?
No.
Goal section says, see appendix A. There is no appendix A. I'd like to strike that.
Makes sense.
So, and again, all I'm saying tonight is we don't have to, if, if we agree to do it, that's great. If we wanna talk about it some more, let's just mark it and we'll come back to it.
Knock it right off.
Okay, good. Are you okay with that, Nadia?
Yeah.
You can use this as your takeoff point, but it needs to be. Yeah, all right. The organization section, I have a quick comment down, four oh five dash four, organization. In the first paragraph, I think that is just a formatting issue, where it says, A, the chair shall.
That's right.
The very last four or five words.
This is, there should be a return here.
Yeah, bring that down, and that's the.
In front of the A.
A is the section header of the deck.
There you go.
Yeah, A, and all of those bullets are subordinate to that A.
And then on three? Okay, yeah. I've got a different.
Yes.
I didn't have another comma.
No. The next one I had was on B.
B, there's two Bs?
Two Bs.
Or not.
One of those should not to be. Okay, that's good.
Question. I had a question on four oh five six three.
Yeah. The last sentence.
No, I've got, I was wondering why we're only public hearings? It says was not present at a public hearing if the matter was subject of. So, we're saying that voting eligibility was not present at the public meeting. Why just public meeting?
Well, let me point out first of all that that's legacy. From.
Before.
From before, just framework, I'm not arguing for it, but it used to say was not present at a public hearing if the matter was a subject of such a hearing. I think that's verbatim what.
And I wasn't sure.
So sort of saying, if the public was speaking and the person wasn't there to hear it, then they're not eligible to vote.
Right.
Unless, and then it goes on.
Yeah, and then it goes.
But it's given special credence to the public hearing, not the initial review.
Right.
The public hearing.
And that was, and I was just wondering.
Legacy. I didn't question it.
I think in the olden days, there was no way to watch a recording. So if you weren't here at the public hearing, you wouldn't look the minutes. But now we can watch the entire meeting online. And went through COVID and all that.
So what if, to your point, if I understand what you're saying, what if we said, if it wasn't, was not present at a preceding, at an earlier meeting? Forget about whether it was a public hearing or initial review, or. And, but members who were not present may make a request to vote if they attest that they watched the previously recorded meeting and are up to date. Is there any reason that we would remove, you know, why not remove the restriction on public hearings and just say, that's a general rule? If you come here and you miss the initial review, you need to say that you're up to speed on this, you read the materials, you watched it.
That's reasonable.
Yeah.
You could have a public hearing where the public is here where they don't ordinarily see a meeting, and then they see the meeting, and they are outraged by the decisions of the planning board, and they say, well, why is that person voting they weren't here at the public hearing? And we can say, ah, they watched the report.
You'd be okay with that?
I'm okay with it. Who's the mic? Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
You're not to repeat that.
You can take the mic with you, sit down. No, I won't say a damn thing more.
Oh, yeah, you'd be snoring, we don't want to hear that.
So do you like that as a bullet point to the?
Change item three, the first sentence to say something like, was not present at a preceding hearing on the matter. A preceding meeting on the matter. Planning board meeting, you know.
And then the same thing.
Well, let's get this right first.
Yes.
Nadia, what are you doing for words? At a preceding meeting, I think, because we don't call the first meetings hearings. And then delete the rest of the sentence. Or maybe on the application, instead of on the matter, yeah. No, not hearing, meeting.
Yes, it says.
Oh, it's deleting hearing, okay.
Was not present at a preceding meeting.
Regarding the application. And then I think that the next sentence, all you have to do is put, make meeting sort of parenthetically plural. And I would propose to delete the next sentence. Confirmation from the applicant is required.
Never seen that happen.
I don't see the need for it, and it's not legacy.
I've never seen it happen. And I don't know why an applicant.
I think if we attest to the board that we're up to speed and the board speaks for it.
Yeah, I've never seen an applicant challenge anything.
So would you, you okay with that? Strike that third sentence?
Yep.
I think it'll simplify our lives. And without diminishing our integrity.
Unless that's some language from the state that, no, the state really likes that or something. Yeah, I'm right with you.
Okay.
Let's keep going, Ed.
Next thing, guys, anybody? I have one under conflict of interest, under B one.
B one?
B, B, B one, four oh five six, B, Baker, one.
Has a financial interest?
No, no, yeah, that has a financial interest. That sentence doesn't read. I think it's okay. There's no, is there a verb? I mean, I don't. We need to clean up the language there, what do we mean? Has any, what did it used to say? Hold on.
Well, you have to read it in context of.
You have to go above, too.
Right, right. No member, no, no, conflict of interest. A member has a conflict of interest if the member's immediate family, employer, employee, organization, or coworker of the member has any financial interest or is closely affiliated with the organization presenting direct or indirect the matter before the board.
Of the matter before the board, needs a verb, you're right.
Maybe any financial interest in.
In, it certainly would.
In the matter before the board, that's fine.
Has any financial in or is closely affiliated with the organization presenting the matter before the board.
Before the board.
But director, director indirect doesn't mean anything to me.
After, direct or indirect of the matter before the board.
I'm proposing, George, to strike director indirect, because I don't understand, what does it mean to you?
Financial interest, maybe, I don't know.
Has any financial.
It's a golf course, and I pay them dues.
Oh. So that's, is that direct or indirect?
You're a shareholder in a company that's presenting something here. Like, not in a mutual fund, but like a small business, and you're actually one of the shareholders. You contribute to the Kenny Bunkport Conservation Trust. I don't think that's a conflict.
That's indirect. Do you see what I'm saying? It opens the door to the whole discussion.
All right, knock it out, I don't care.
I understand, I'm just saying, I feel like I'm begging for someone to smack me with a cudgel.
I don't care if it's in there. I think it's pretty clear.
Without that.
If you need to recuse yourself, you need to recuse yourself.
Yeah, figure it out.
Thank you, simplify.
We're just talking direct or indirect.
Yes, direct or indirect comes out. The rest of it seemed fine to me if you add the word in after interest.
Yeah, that's fine.
You gotta get that last comma after indirect.
Yeah, that goes away too, right. Anybody, next one I had was three.
Next one I had was eight meetings.
Let me do three then. Same, same, conflict of interest lead in. Coworker of the member. Now, all of the, one and two began with a has, has a financial interest, has an ownership interest, and all of a sudden, I've made, I got a declarative sentence in there. So I don't know how it continues from B. It doesn't read properly. But regardless of that, it seems convoluted. A member's direct official action has an appearance of impropriety. Okay, fair enough. Although not constituting a conflict of interest. Wait a minute, this is saying he has a conflict of interest if, and now we're saying, well, if he has an appearance of impropriety, which isn't a conflict of interest or may not be, and it may create a reasonable perception of the member's ability to carry out his or her official duties. What are we saying there? If he doesn't have a conflict of interest, but he may have an appearance of impropriety.
That's fairly standard language.
Is it?
Yeah, it can be a situation where you don't have a direct financial interest. But you have a relationship, or you have something that, from the general public's perception, could be conceived as a conflict. It's not a conflict, but it could be perceived as one.
It's not my business, it's my son's business.
Right, yeah, well, that'd be a familiar relationship, but I mean, you could be in a relationship with somebody you're not married.
It says official action. No, it says a member's direct official action has the appearance of an impropriety.
So maybe you spoke at a public meeting previously.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And you, you're known, that's what it's trying to get.
That's what it's trying to get.
And now a board member.
Let's make it say that.
But I think it's purposely left a little bit open-ended.
No, no, I'm fine with that, but for example, I want to clean up the grammar, but I'd like to propose to delete although not constituting a conflict of interest, because that's not serving us. It's in the what is a conflict of interest section, and now we're saying, we're saying it's a conflict of interest if there's a direct official action has the appearance of an impropriety. So.
Just strike the although.
Strike the although, or highlight it and think about it. Just, you could highlight it and then just rethink about it.
If you want to think about it, that's fine, but I'm fine with the.
Seems we were hung up on this one before.
Yeah, 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 I didn't get over it. So what are we doing?
I struck it. Happy to.
No, no.
No, no, I mean.
You're okay, okay. So.
If it's something that the town attorney has an issue with, she'll certainly reflag it for us.
Yeah. So I just, is there a way, who's a good grammarian here? Can make the lead in, make the lead in for that consistent with one and two.
Is it important to have a member's direct official action in there, or can you just start with has the appearance of impropriety?
You gotta do something.
You gotta do something about the member.
I think you could say has taken official action or.
Yeah, I'd be happy with that. Has made even, yeah. Has taken, I agree with you, Nadia. Has taken an official act.
Has taken official action, that has.
That has. And that I could speak to in terms of the, you know, the discussion that we've had, made a speech. Got on social media.
Ooh, never.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what we were, that's what we were getting at. Great, great.
Stay away from social media.
All right, we've got fifteen more minutes. Who's next?
Okay, the next one I had was eight meetings.
Yes.
We have here at A, talking about notice of public meetings, and then down at H one, we have notice of regular meetings. I'm not sure why we've got them in different places. And. Also, you know, it's talking about publications and newspapers and that, what about the website, which we talk about?
Well, this says the website.
We talk about websites specifically down under regular meetings, but not public meetings.
Oh. So I have circles and arrows all over this paragraph, too, so I'm with you. You want to take a stab offline? You want to try to fix it here, we can do that.
Yeah, I didn't understand why one was there.
I agree with that, I have that flagged, too.
I, like, where did that come from?
And, guys, we're not doing that. This is direction to the planning board. I mean, if the code enforcement office needs to do this, that's great, but I don't know whether they do or don't, but this isn't a planning board task. I've written who and how, not a planning board responsibility, item one. I'd propose to take it out of there.
Yeah, no, I would support that.
The whole of section H?
No, A one.
A one.
Under four oh five eight, A one.
I didn't know what that was.
And this isn't in the legacy either.
And I would suggest cleaning up or combining A and H, or at least making them look similar, even if, but I didn't know why we were doing public meetings in A and regular meetings in H.
Well, I think, oh, I'm more to the point of, you go down through meetings, and regular meetings are item B. And then down the bottom, we've got regular meetings under notice, so.
And A, it's notice of public meeting shall be.
So let me, let me either ask, let me ask and potentially offer to take that offline and come back with a proposal. Do you want to take a run at it, or do you want me to?
You've been doing such a stellar job.
No good deed. Okay, I'll take a run.
Yeah, it just cleaned it up a bit.
Just want to understand, Mike, are you distinguishing between public proceedings and regular meetings?
Well, it's under notice H, it's got regular meetings and special site visits. I'm proposing that we just have public meetings in there.
Public proceedings, okay.
And lose it in A.
Because sometimes we have to have a quorum in front of the select board, which is a special thing, we're in session technically.
We think the first section, A, should be for regular meetings, not for public meetings, rather.
Or just the notice.
No, no, let's leave, well, my first thought is, if notice has got its own section.
Move it to notice.
Move it to notice, if it's for notice, but since there's a section just following that on regular meetings, and a section following that on special meetings, maybe there should be a section on public meetings or public hearings.
So any time we have a meeting, a public meeting, whether it's from the select board, or it's our regularly scheduled meeting, or it's a site walk, we have to notify the public.
So maybe, no, that's a good point. What's the definition of a public meeting?
You don't have to, the town, the town.
It has to be noticed.
You come before the select board, the town's going to let the public know.
Yeah.
But I mean, just like, I mean, so you don't have to.
As far as bylaws, we.
Right, you don't have to let the town, you don't individually, the board does not individually let the public know that you're coming to meet with the select board or anything like that.
Okay.
Right, and we may say that somewhere, probably, that the town has taken responsibility of it.
Like minutes.
For doing that, but.
Which we found going back to nineteen seventy-something or other, turned out to be a big deal, minutes.
Push that back, though.
Okay.
The first sentence I had here was, the question I had was, public notice, I circled that. This is the section on meetings. Public notice shall be given for all public proceedings. Wait a minute, is that, does that mean meetings? Are we going to say that public notice shall be given for all meetings? Maybe. If the meeting, if the proceedings are a meeting consisting of three or more members, unless accepted by statute. What? What is that first sentence? What are we trying to convey here? Given my preconception that meetings is organized into regular meetings, special meetings, and workshop meetings, and site visits, and. So is this, is this belonging in the notice section?
I was thinking it belonged in the notice section, but trimmed down.
Yeah. If that's. If, if that's the thought, I'll go take a whack at that afterwards. I'd like to hear.
I would, I would take a whack. I, I, I think, I think you could, I understand where you're coming from. I think you may want to look at that and kind of rejig it a little bit and come back on that rather than try and solve it tonight.
I will, yeah, don't, don't, I don't take it as direction, I'm just saying, I want permission to go step, step back just a little, keep, keep the.
And rework that.
The order, but make a thoughtful proposal.
Yep.
Still got a few minutes here. What about under B? You got anything on B, under meetings, Mike?
No.
Peter, anybody? Um, let me just, it's, it's been several weeks since I made these markings, so, you know, and I just had a birthday today, so I'm, I'm even older. Even older, thanks, thank you. Made it.
Well, my thought, can we just go back up to A?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Is this a public hearing?
My, my, my thought was.
When does your resignation take effect?
I'm just a member, I'm just a member of the public.
Oh, all right. Speak wisely then. But do you have a conflict?
The first paragraph under the heading meetings should talk about meetings, not about the public notice. This public notice thing should be farther down in the body.
That was incisive.
I, I agree, I agree. In fact, maybe it should go under section H.
All of section A goes under notice and.
H, H is notice.
Yeah.
And B becomes A.
That'll be step one of this, whatever I come back with. You won't ever hear about it, but.
And you know what?
He can zoom in.
It looks like it was cut in there from somewhere else.
Oh, definitely, definitely. Okay, okay, so, so you want to, can I talk about B then?
Yep.
Let me just see if I can read this and, and maybe my thoughts will come back to me here. The meeting schedule shall be set annually at the beginning of the calendar year. Sounds good. Regular meetings shall be at a regular date in time. Established twice monthly. No, we're not gonna change it, we're not gonna establish it twice monthly. I think we want to say that regular meetings.
It may, maybe, it might, might need to be a comma.
Break, oh.
Shall be regular date in time established.
Shall be at an established date and time, comma, twice monthly.
So, if she's trying to get, they're trying to get to the point that you're supposed to meet twice a month.
Yeah.
Well, you could go to once a month if you'd like.
I don't think, I don't think the developers of the public would like that.
We're trying to capture our, our practice, to caught by our practice here. Regular meetings shall be at a, an established date and time, twice monthly.
Yeah, that's, that's what that's trying to say.
Is that okay?
Yes. Yep.
Comma after time, yeah. Yeah. Great. And I'd like to strike based on the availability of the planning board members.
You can do that.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of a given. It's not a, right. We already said elsewhere what a quorum was and
Yep.
We volunteered for this craziness. Okay? Next thing, somebody else.
My next comment's not till motions, twelve meeting procedures, no? No, it's not even there.
I have one on ten, brief, a small one, I think.
Okay.
Four oh five, ten, B. The applicant shall mail or deliver a number of copies, complete copies. I, I think.
It's, it's almost the start of that shouldn't be there. It's kind of a weird beginning sentence after B.
It's almost, well, a, all of them are structured that way. The first one is time for submission. It's like, these are sub-bullet headings.
They should have colon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe put both of them, time of submission, colon. But then, this is the planning board rules and regulations. The, I think we want to say the applicant will deliver. I don't think we want to allow for mailing. And, and, I mean, we don't need to specify mailing. If he delivers them by buggy, I don't care, just delivers them. So could we change the shall to a will? Because this is, this isn't their requirements, this is ours. The applicant will deliver a complete number of copies equal to the number of board members and two for support staff and et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, they shall.
It's not a requirement. It's a given. That's what they're doing. Okay, that's all I had on that. And you had something on meeting procedure on twelve? Mike?
Uh, no, I just underlined some things, I'm good.
On twelve, I proposed that item four and item five, to me, seem the same thing. I'll tell you that four is a legacy, came, come from the existing document, and five was added.
I, I'd say that my interpretation is that postponing to a future date suggests setting the date, whereas tabling an item suggests an, an, an undetermined time to reevaluate.
So, so why don't we say to, to table an item or motion indefinitely?
I think it's redundant, but I think that they could be interpreted two different ways.
No, no, that's good. Do, can we consolidate them? To postpone to a future date or to table an item or motion indefinitely?
Yeah, sure.
And you want to say indefinite, that's.
Well, I didn't, I didn't pick up on that before, but that's a good. Good interpretation if we, maybe that's why we put it there. I couldn't.
Well, some, sometimes if it's an active application, there's a clock that's running, isn't there?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we do it to an indefinite date, a clock might run out.
This allows that.
I'm thinking about pickleball courts down at Goose Rock.
This doesn't, this doesn't, this doesn't override the existing.
Didn't it run out?
It's gone.
No, it's on, it's on there.
Isn't it at the bottom?
Yeah, it's still there.
Still there.
Pickleball, you can't get rid of pickleball.
No, you can't.
I don't think that they've hit their mark.
Ask Tim Harrington.
I had a comment on B.
On B in evidence? No, on B reconsideration, yeah.
To, to consider are discouraged. Why, why are we saying that?
Well, again, that was legacy.
Yeah, I just.
We didn't, we weren't bold enough to take it out.
Maybe we are now. And then the motion must be made by a voting member who voted in the majority or a case of a tie vote in the negative must be made the same meeting prior to any adjournment. When voted cannot be reconsidered. It just seemed kind of like you can, we don't want you to reconsider, but if you're gonna reconsider, you have to do it in the meeting and you had to voted for it, and even if we find out something, additional information later, you're toast.
So I think this is one that Nina probably researched. Some of that may be legal. Yeah, of course, it's gotta be.
I like the word implore, I like to implore the board to reconsider.
Is that in there?
No, it's a great word.
You want to add that?
And you have to vote in the negative in order to move to reconsider.
What was, what was in there before?
It's just in the, in the, in the event of a tie.
I, I, I don't even know.
Oh.
But if it's a tie vote, you have to have voted in the negatives in order to.
So, so this is, I think this is verbatim, what's in there now. I'll, I'll read, I'll read the old, the existing rules and procedures. Motions to reconsider or discourage, the motion must be made by a voting member who voted in the majority, or in the case of a tie vote in the negative, must be made at the same meeting prior to any adjournment or continuance, and when voted cannot be reconsidered. So these are the rules that we have been living under.
I don't know if we've ever reconsidered anything.
We've never had a tie vote.
I, I don't know why you would put in there that it's to be discouraged. That seems like, why, why would that be in there? And then it has to be done in the same meeting or it can't, cannot be reconsidered.
Could we, could we propose to, to, when this goes to the attorney, that, that you ask?
I, I would, I would on that one, that might be the one you want, yeah.
Not, not, not to just accept it and see what they say, but to, to ask, ask about it. Can, can, can you help us understand this one?
Or there may be something that says it needs to be that way.
I'm, I'm very, I'm trying to be very cautious about changing something that existed prior to my time even. But if I don't understand it, I want to know. What am I supposed to be doing here? What, make it, make it in plain English for me, please. Can we ask Nadia for that to?
Yep, it's already on the comments.
Thank you, okay. Good catch. Next, anything on the evidence?
I was wondering why rules of evidence shall not be strictly applied. So if we're not applying them, why are we saying that?
It's a legal term, rules of evidence? Things have to be presented in a particular incremental way?
But if we're not doing that, why are we saying we don't have to do that?
Well, I think that it must be alluding to some rules that would have the board say, oh no, that wasn't.
That hearsay evidence. You say there's a fire hydrant.
But I, I want to know all of that. We've, we've, we've suspended that, those legal challenges. I don't know all the nuances, but I know, again, this is what was, has been in there historically, and I'd love some advice as to what it means to us.
Town attorney.
You don't care.
I said town attorney.
Okay.
If the town attorney says, yeah, you have to have that in there, well, that has been there.
Well, then again, not just you have to, but what, what should we?
Like an example, yeah.
Yeah, an example, so that, that would be great.
So, so you're just looking on attorney feedback again?
That's right, that's right, yeah. No change, but attorney.
No, no, it helps, Nadia, for anybody, is an example. What does this look like practically?
Yeah.
Okay.
Has it ever happened? So we recognize it when we see it. I had a question on A, under evidence, where it says the board has the ability to conduct a poll of the room for the record for the attendees who agree with similar statements being raised on a particular topic. Do you think what's envisioned there is a public hearing? Do you think that's?
That was what I, I thought it was a public hearing, so instead of repeating, having a bunch of people say the same thing, you could take a poll and move on. That, that was my interpretation.
That you could do that.
Yeah.
It, it gives you the opportunity to do that versus listening to everybody.
So you think all of, in fact, guidelines for conduct, really this is talking about public hearings and.
Show of hands, everybody agree with that?
Couple of people come up, they support it, you can, you see the rooms got filled, and you go, how many other people here support?
Twelve people lined up, they all want to say the same thing, so.
The fish pier in, in Cape Portus.
Okay, we'll just leave that, leave that.
That was a meeting for the agents. And Mr. Vice Chair, we are after eight, it's okay of me to keep going, but you might want to pull a group.
I, I will poll a group. I will tell you that I have one, one more substant, no, one more substantive questions and, and a couple of formatting questions. So do you want to continue on for five minutes or so?
Let's knock it out.
I got one.
Knock it out.
Let's hear. Mike?
My last one is, oh god, it's page four.
What, 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 what's the major heading?
I'm trying to find the major heading. It's under public hearings.
Yeah, under four oh five fourteen.
And then it goes under five A, B, C, A, B, and then six is forms?
No. There's no.
There we go, there we go.
You're not under public hearings.
There we are, there we are.
So, C six.
Five A, B. Yeah, the format here is really good.
Four oh five fourteen.
Reo, hearing reopen. The chair or presiding. There should be chair or presiding.
B.
Presiding person.
Oh, you're way down under C.
I lost track of where I was yet.
You're in section C, general provisions, item two, participation, item B.
It's five B.
Hearing reopen at any time of final decision, the chair.
He's in five B.
Yeah.
It's gonna be four oh five fourteen.
How can it be in five C?
Five B, B.
C, general provisions, five.
C, five B.
C, one, two, three, four, five, A, B, C.
Should really have these things indented properly.
Yeah, so that was, that was one of mine.
And I think this is chair or presiding member.
Okay, yeah.
Can we go back to?
Yes.
No, we can't reconsider. Oh, we're in the same meeting.
Yes, we can.
Evidence.
How did you vote?
We didn't vote yet.
Evidence, C. The presiding member may refuse to admit evidence that is irrelevant, immaterial, unduly repetitious, or I think it's not submitted in a timely manner.
Uh, where is that now?
Five C.
What's, under what, major heading, under evidence?
Evidence C.
Evidence C. Yeah. Shall be admissible, may refuse, irrelevant material, or not, yeah. That, that's just an omission, I think.
Yeah.
Good catch. Can I, can I do my one? On evidence, four oh five thirteen D. This is another one I, I could use an example of. If the board anticipates an application will be controversial and consults with professional, technical, and legal advisors, it, the board, I imagine, must introduce into the record any information provided by said advisors, especially if the information is provided outside the board meeting. What do you think that's getting at?
Have we ever done that?
I, that might be something similar to when we ask Acorn to do stormwater review.
Right.
Right.
What about if we ask the town attorney for an opinion? Do we read that into the record somehow?
You, we oftentimes will put it in the memo.
The memo, okay.
Says it must introduce into the record in some fashion. We could do that by allusion to a record that was posted on the website, or we could read it for the, you know, we could, I think we could do it in a number of ways.
We did this evening. Did you talk to the fire chief? Yes, I did. What'd they say? Looked good.
No, this is more like if the board goes to the fire chief and says, I want your opinion, then we need to put that on record.
I was thinking of Acorn or attorney.
But it says if the board consults. Well, the, the, the results of the Acorn needs to go on the record. That, that's clear.
That's clear.
If we go to the.
But why, why would the board, why would you guys as a board go out on your own without asking the staff?
We could put the board or its designee.
You could do the board or its designee, because you actually request the staff or the town.
There was a dock on Turbot's Creek, and we all independently, and they said, well, there's no place to park a boat, so they had to have this dock. So the board all independently called every marina in a ten mile radius, and every, boy, you're the fifth person who's asked me this question. Do we have any free docks?
Well, let me, let me, along, in the spirit of that, what about deleting the phrase anticipates an application will be controversial? And, you know, if the board consults with professional, technical, and legal advisors, we might do that through, through the agency of the code office, of course, that's what we, our practice is, then we can't keep that quiet. It needs to go on the record. That's all this is saying, and I'm, I'm happy with that.
It's something that takes place outside of a meeting and applies to what's going on inside a meeting, so it's, should be part of the public record.
So take, take out the controversial piece?
Anticipates an application will be controversial and, I would propose to delete that phrase.
Fine with that.
You okay, old man?
Sounds great.
Do lawyers get paid for this? I should have been a lawyer, this is fun.
That's it, yeah.
Nadia, you want to take a cut at the indentation on this, or do you want me to try that too?
Um, I, I will say I took a look at the original one that we were working on, the one that's on the SharePoint, and the formatting is a little bit better. So it's possible that the formatting issue happened in all of the shifting.
If you accept all changes, I contend this is what you're gonna get. That, that's all, and if, if you can do it and not have that, then I'm happy with that too.
Happy, I'm happy to play with the formatting after we've done those accepting, but I think.
But before it goes to the attorney?
Yes, we certainly will send her a, we, we usually send her actually the underlined, strike-through version, so that she can see what changes we're making.
But we don't have that. We do not, we did not start with the existing rules and procedures. Nina came to us with a document that had been heavily edited, and then we started tracking changes to her.
I think that she only missed like the first paragraph, so we can certainly add in those underlines and.
I'm just cautioning you that.
Sure.
We don't really have, we don't really have that, that's why I had to.
You could make one by putting this version to the original and making the changes and do it. It's a little bit laborious.
It's a lot of, I think it's, I'm not volunteering for that, because I, I gave that some thought, it's a bit, but you might be right, yeah.
The changes, the changes that we made tonight, I'll go in and put them in the document that's in the SharePoint, just so that everything's in the same place.
Yeah.
Certainly keeps things easier on our side.
Cool. And I will take, I, I took two actions, I think, which was send out an email pointer to the comp plan and then consolidate the section 408 review and.
The meeting.
Propose consolidation to the meeting section.
I think it'd be cool if we had a public hearing on our bylaw.
Do we have a second? Sorry, there's no second, George.
Ah, well, it would have been fun.
Do we sing it, happy birthday while we're on?
No, please do not, do not do that, we did that at the gym this morning. But they gave me a protein bar, so, you know, unless you're gonna pony up.
I gave you a, a used pen.
And then we, we did a foolish dance, that was fun too. Um, is there anything else on the agenda, or that should have been on the agenda? Vote on the planning bylaws, we talked about election of officers, next time?
Next time.
I am waiting for a motion then.
I would make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.